I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg zoning board of appeals. I will tell you how the hearing will proceed, but first I have to give you a notification. If I can find what I did with it. Okay, the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. This is remotely, you can use a computer. Are we on tonight?
No.
Okay. I'd like to introduce you to the board. To the left is Lisa Norman, the board secretary, and Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, David Black, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, and Don Gurney. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. If anyone shows, we will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to read the application.
Okay, the project address is 149 Summer Street. In the project description, seeking a license to sell secondhand motor vehicles at the property, which is currently a gas service station. The name of the applicant is Philip S. Smith of Five Hunt Road in Westford, Mass. And I'll read the question and answers as follows. Oh, and the owner is Lynn Jervis Smith of Five Hunt Road of Westford. And Philip S. Smith of Westford, I'm sorry. So the proposed use of the property is sale of secondhand motor vehicles.
I think I got it.
The questions and answers are as follows. Please describe how the proposed action will prevent conditions that are injurious or dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic conditions, danger of fire or explosion. The response, proposed project site has been utilized as a commercial facility for a significant period of time. The proposed project site provides adequate parking for the employees and visitors. The site also provides adequate access for fire department and other service equipment. The proposed project also provides adequate and safe pedestrian and safe vehicle access through and around the property. Please describe any material adverse effects on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The response, the proposed project's parcel location is 149 Summer Street. The end of Summer Street is comprised of nearly all commercial buildings. By utilizing the building as an office for a used motor vehicle dealership, the project will provide continued life and vitality to the neighborhood. Please describe how the proposed use or activity will operate with reasonable regard for odor and sightliness of an open use. The reply, the applicant has operated numerous motor vehicle sales lots in multiple communities across the Commonwealth and has maintained clean lot in compliance with the zoning codes of the respective communities. Please describe how the proposed action will reduce and/or prevent noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare available -- or glare at the lot lines amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent properties. The reply, the proposed project does not appear to have any negative impact on the natural environment. There should not be any impact on stormwater or soil erosion. The proposed project will not leach or contaminate any groundwater. Additionally, the proposed project site has been used continually as a commercial building where there is not any significant deviation from past usage. Additional information relative to the applicable code of the town of Lunenburg, the proposed project will not have any negative financial effect to the town, and said project is fully compliant with the zoning ordinance. And attached is a site plan of the project. And then we did receive an updated site plan with the parking of 12 vehicles, customer parking, and repair parking. There's also a certified list of abutters, all that were notified two weeks prior to this evening. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant or his representative to come to Would you like to add anything at this time?
No, I'd just like to give you a brief background. Good evening, Mr. Chair, attorney and members of the board, Attorney Brian Ocasey, here with an office at One Courthouse Lane in Chelmsford, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Philip Smith, who is a resident of Westford, Massachusetts. Mr. Smith has been in the used car business for 23 years. I have represented him personally in lots in Lowell and Chelmsford, and he also had a lot in Groton at one point. Currently, both his daughters are Division I golfers, and his third daughter is going to be a Division I golfer, so he's been chasing them around the country, watching them play golf and supporting them, so he currently doesn't have any licenses. But he purchased this property about a year and a half ago, and he's looking to get back into the business, and this lot in this community seems like a good area for him to do that. He's fully aware of all the rules and regulations of both the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town of Lunenburg. He's never had any disciplinary issues with any licenses he's previously held. And we submitted a plan, too, that provides or is requesting 12 spots for display of vehicles. There's also spots for customers and a handicap spot in compliance with the zoning. And additionally, there currently is a repair garage there. That repair garage is also going to be in business, and there's the repair parking in the back of the complex. Summer Street, as you well know, is a main thoroughfare in the town of Lunenburg, and we believe this project is similar in nature to other buildings on the street, and we'd ask for the special permit to allow the change of use or allow the use of outdoor auto sales. I don't know if you want to add anything, Phil?
No, that's pretty much covered.
I think based on that, you've owned it a year and a half, you said?
Yes, sir.
I went there a few weeks ago. I went there again this morning to check. There are many, many cars on that lot as you speak, more than double, triple whatever you're looking for. Where did all those cars come from, and why are they all in the lot?
Currently, right now, I rent the property.
You have to be the --
Oh, right now, I --
Name and address, please.
Philip Smith, Five Hunt Road, Westford, Mass. Currently, it's rented out right now to the repair shop. I'm only there like once a month, basically, to collect the rent, then I leave, where, you know, I, the last time I was there, I noticed there was a large amount of cars there, but I wasn't really sure what they were, if they were serviced. They're not, you know, most of them had plates on them and stuff, so I'm not really aware of what the, I don't know, like, I might have counted 35 cars there the last time I was there. I wasn't really sure what they were there for.
I think when I was there, I counted.
And I think, just to add on, obviously, if Mr. Smith brings his business there, he's going to want a clean lot, and there's obviously going to be a limitation.
I would be there more.
Right. And it's also going to be a limitation as to the cars, so he knows that if he doesn't have the limit of cars, he can be fined by the inspector.
Okay, so you're going to clean that up, basically, is what you're telling me, and what you're going to do is stick to this plan that you have here?
Correct.
Which is much more reasonable than what's there.
What's there today?
Correct.
Correct.
I have a few other questions, but I'd rather open it up to the board so they can ask their questions if they have any.
Are you aware that there used to be a pump there for kerosene?
Is that gasoline?
I know that when we, it's some sort of toxic, I know when we did the purchase and sale, there's some sort of environmental restriction to it, correct?
Yeah, the only reason why, I drive by there probably 10 times a day, you know, because I lived by Lake Whalen, and it's my access into John Fitch and into Fitchburg. And when I was building my house, I used to go there to buy kerosene all the time, and I've seen the pump taken down, but I've never seen anything about it with the storage tank. And I just want to make sure, for your safety, before you invest a lot of money in paving and doing this, that you make sure that the property itself is safe for anything like that. And also, my, another question was, how many gas pumps do you propose having to sell gas out in front? I know there's, I think, one now. There used to be two or three. And that's another problem with storage and something like that.
Right now, there are no gas pumps there. They don't sell gas there.
Okay.
Yeah, so they were taken out.
But if that's the case, and nothing's been done about removing any tanks, and you're proposing putting a dozen cars on the same spot, that may propose, possibly pose a problem.
I believe when we did the closing, this is, the Mass DEP has already been inspected the property, and there's an order of conditions on the property that we, that was in compliance, and we had to give them access in case DEP wanted to do an audit. But my understanding is that the property is clean right now, in compliance with all the laws.
So that would take care of both of those.
Exactly, yes, yes.
So you're proposing cleaning up all the scrap?
Correct, around.
In the back? And as Mr. Gravel mentioned, you know, there are a lot of vehicles on there, and I've counted as, God knows how many. But where you only propose 12 plus 5 and 4, where do you propose having your employees park?
I would be the only employee.
For both sales and repair?
Um.
Because you've got a --
I don't know how many people work in the repair right now.
He's not going to operate the repair station, that's, he leases that out, and that's why there was parking for the repair in the back on the plan.
I didn't understand what you said.
There's parking for the repair garage back there. He's not going to op, he's only going to operate a used car business. The current lessees are going to continue to run the garage.
So it'll be a dual business on the same property?
Correct, correct.
Oh, I didn't understand that.
There is, but that is allowed.
Okay.
That is allowed for a used car lot.
So this will end up being an all asphalt yard. Do you propose any greenery anywhere around?
Any greenery that the board would like us to put in, Mr. Smith will put in, if, to provide some green space or a better look for the neighborhood, he will, he will do that.
Thank you.
So my question, is the folks for the service, the same folks who are renting today?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, they're the ones who are going to have to take care of all the vehicles that are there?
Correct, yes.
And do something about it. Okay, because, you know, obviously, right now, you're proposing like a 1, 2, 3, 4 spots for service. Now, I would assume that they have cars waiting or other cars. Is there, is there a possibility of putting more spaces in the back there for them for service? You know, whether it's towards the street, it looks like you probably get --
I mean, it would be fine with me, I mean, now, this is the back of the building, right? I mean, you could, you could, you could do eight or 10 spots there easily.
Okay, the reason for my question is basically that, right? It's that, you know, I would look, if I'm having a service station, I can easily have four vehicles between customers waiting, customers I finished, and things of that sort.
Pickups.
And things like that, so I would look, there's really nothing for employees back there.
Okay.
Okay.
We've been more than hap, that's, this is what the engineer drew up. We've been more than happy if there's room for more spots to add spots there, absolutely.
Okay, all right. And the, the hours of operation, would it be, well, just first, the hours of operation, would you look for it to be the same, that the limit being the same for the service station and yourself, or?
Pretty much, I would say that, you know, nowadays, it's kind of by appointments, so, but I would say 9 to 5 would be, and then Saturdays would probably be like 8 to 1. I would take Sunday off.
Give yourself one day off, okay?
Yeah. I hope.
Three kids in college.
Sundays to finally, finally round, I think. Okay, all right. Because that would be the whole thing, is this, that, is, Ms. Chair, I, just a question on that, is if the dual business with both businesses have to approach us?
What's that?
If we have a dual business on the site, do both businesses have to approach us?
You have, you have the owner of the property, that other one doesn't own anything that applies from you. I don't believe so. That actually, that Speedway was a Speedway gas station.
Right, I remember, and I know it's about the same owner.
At least, I mean, I was probably 18 or 19 when I could drive in there and buy three gallons of gas for 90 cents. So, you know, it has been there a long time. It's been a repair garage also ever since it's been there. A one bay, correct?
Correct.
A repair garage. So I think that all of that would be fine on the same lot.
Okay, okay, so we're just adding the used car.
Well, yeah, like, so many people that have been before us, if they have, you know, a gas station, they want to sell used cars.
Right.
Any other question?
Yeah, so, first question is, you don't know who owns those cars that are there, all those cars. I drive, I live on Whalen, so I drive by that lot every single day, all right? So, again, 35, 40 cars, right? You're going to, someone's running a repair business, you're going to run 12 cars. Then there's the issue of junk cars, because on that end of Whalen Road, there are some businesses that store junk, undrivable vehicles, that cause a property devaluation for that whole area, okay? And it's become a problem. So, we're not storing cars that are not going to run? Everything's going to be sticker ready to go out the door?
Buy cars, yes, yep.
And then these, these other cars in that area are going to be taken care of?
Yes.
So what's, what in your mind is the total number of vehicles that are going to be on that lot at any given time during the day?
I'm going to tell you, I'm looking at, what I'm looking at, 21.
And then if we add a --
Including customer parking, repair, and cars for sale. You got 12, you got 5, and then you got the four in the back.
And if we could add another four spots in the back there, if that was, that would be 25. And if he's going to be there running, all I can tell you is from representing him, his lot on, in North Chelmsford, and his lot in Lowell have been immaculate. So my guess is going, this lot will be immaculate, and he's going to have to crack down on the current lessees to get rid of those cars, or else he's the one that's going to get fined by the inspectional services.
And again, I know, David, you were asking about, is there room where those four cars are? They've got 16 cars parked on that back space down here.
Right, no, I'd just be looking at it more because of four cars for service. Well, there's really no employee parking right now, you know, if you look at it. And I'm okay if you're saying four spots for employees, you make it a 25.
And we could have our engineer add four spots and submit an updated plan, if that's, if it's possible.
I would, I would.
And lighting, right? You're going to put some light, you're going to put any more lighting in there that you know of? Is it going, is it going to, I mean, I take, I granted, it's a mobile home lot across the street, but I don't, again, I've lived this, vendors have put up large lights that have shined in people's houses and caused discomfort, right? So any lighting you're going to put up is not going to be intrusive to anybody?
No. And if it is, I would take it down, you know, if there was a problem with the light, if it was on a ti, most of the lights would be on timers or sensors. If it was a problem, I would hope that they would just come down, and we would move the angle of the light, or just take it down if it wasn't working correctly.
Yes, today, they have a lot of the lighting that we have recommended that is, just goes down.
Yeah, it's like --
It doesn't go off the property line.
Because that, that is listed in the special permit when you apply for it. Lighting will not be intrusive, just want to make you aware of that.
I'm going to read this first.
I'm done, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's okay. You don't have to go in order either, you can do.
I'll mess up the order and ask.
We have to follow the rules.
Okay, let me ask you this. Have you approached the gentleman or whoever is doing the repairs and told him what you were going to do and showed him the plan? And has he agreed to that, and does he have somewhere to put all those cars?
He, he's a tenant at Will right now, and I haven't been up on the lot for the last, for the last three months. I've had somebody work for me go up and get the rent check, so I have discussed that I was in the process of trying to get a used car license. I've not discussed moving the cars with him, other than, when I'm on the lot, I would say like, what, what's this car? It has a flat tire. Is this one serviced, or is it, like, this was here last month? When I'm on it, I just haven't been on it the last three months because I, I just, but I have.
I'm saying that because I want to tell you, you know, if we pass this, if we do this, we're going to stick you to, you know, to this plan.
Correct, yeah.
And if he violates it, it's coming back on you.
Correct. Where, in other lots that I, I own, it is a constant, you know, Brian, this car has to be moved. Brian, you can't leave tires out here. It's a constant, you know, my other lots are in Chelmsford and Lowell, where I drive by them more than I drive, I'm not out in this area as much as, the other ones I almost go by daily when I'm around, so it's a constant kind of nudging and working with your tenant to make sure that the lot is kept to like the standards.
And you're going to actually be at this?
I would be up, I'd be up here, you know, I'd be at auctions in the morning buying, and then I would be.
That was one of my other questions I was going to ask, is where you get all your cars?
Correct, yeah.
And I knew it would be auctioned, but.
I'd be, and then I'd be up tinkering with the cars and, you know, they would probably be doing most of my service work and getting prepared to be sold.
Okay, the other thing that hasn't been brought up that I will bring up, I know there's sidewalks there from the state that come up with, which curves onto Whalen Road. And you, I just want to make it clear, you can't encroach on that.
Correct.
You have to keep your cars, you can't have the front of the cars sticking on.
Lifted.
Right. Any of that, we, you know, we would recommend that you be, I know that you want to have them out for display so that people can see them, but they have to be backed from the sidewalk, at least a few feet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Does this have to go before the?
Planning board?
Planning board.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Would it be better off if we asked to continue this meeting, until after the planning board has met, to be in his favor for making sure that he can subdivide or do whatever he has to do before them?
Well, what they're there for, I'll read, I'll read Brian's, the building inspectors. Please note, the use will also require planning board site plan approval due to the change of use, and not use that requires a special permit. Also, trigger a site plan approval from the planning board. So you're right, they do have to go there next. I don't know if we really need to wait. I think we can act on this plan, and if the planning board has any other ideas. I mean, this, this plan right now, in my opinion, is reasonable.
I mean, really? What we're looking for today is to allow the, the use of selling cars.
Right.
And then the planning board would give the final okay on this plan.
Correct. One thing I'm going to, I'm going to read them now. These are the conditions that we have, if we, you know, if it goes through, this is the conditions that will go on our decision. The applicant shall file for, entertain certificancy from, of occupancy from the building commissioner prior to opening the business. This will assure that the building department is able to inspect the site for compliance with all applicable state, local regulations, and all conditions as a special permit. A limit of, in this case, 12, that 12 cars may be displayed for sale. Am I right on that number?
Yes.
All vehicles that are for sale shall be ready and maintain inspections as acquired by the registry of motor vehicles. All automobiles must be placed, in this case, it's from Summer Street, but they got the sidewalk, I'm going to assume that's about what, 4 feet? And then we got probably another 2 or 3, so maybe 6 feet? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Right, I know, you're talking around.
Yes, the one that goes to Whalen Road, is that cement walk right there.
Correct, yep.
Okay, so, minimum 6. All loading and unloading, I don't know if you, how you're going to do these cars, that was another question, if all loading and unloading a vehicle is to be done off-street for safety purposes.
Sure.
So if you do, bring them in on trailer. No parts, materials, or tools shall be displayed or stored out of doors, no junk. And that term is hereby defined as, shall be stored or maintained out of doors, as used herein the term junk shall mean any work out, cast off, discarded articles or material which are ready for destruction, or which have been collected or stored for salvage or conversion to some use. The business hours for the sale is, you said 9 to 5, is that right?
Correct, 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, and 8 to 1, requesting 8 to 1 on Saturday.
8 to 1 on Saturday.
Correct.
I guess the question is, do you want to limit that?
Limit what?
I mean, whatever is allowed by the, whatever is the typical by the town, we would request, but that's what your hours are going to be.
Yeah, those are the, we'll call them ballpark hours, you know, where, you know.
My question is, are these also pertaining to the?
It pertains, yes.
To the whole property?
To the whole property.
Not just his business?
No, no.
But the other business on the property?
We are going by this plan.
Okay, so also pertaining to the garage that's there? So that they can't have any junk?
Oh, yeah.
Or anything else?
Yeah, of course, yeah, no, yeah, they can't have that.
These conditions are for both businesses.
Right, right.
Mr. Chairman?
Not the hours, though, the, but the, yeah, the hours, but the --
I don't know what his hours are.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question. So again, another, another thing I've seen, where your repair business, your leasing, where is he going to do all his work? Inside? Is all work going to be conducted inside the building, or is he going to work outside the building?
I would assume it would be inside. I've never seen any outside work when I've been up there.
All right, so we're going on, I'm just saying, we're going on record saying, all repair business will be conducted inside the building. Okay?
I mean, obviously, in the wintertime, they can't work outside. I mean, and I've never really, you, you probably know the property better than I do, if you've ever seen it outside. I haven't, whenever.
I'm just asking that question. I haven't seen anybody outside, but everybody runs their business differently?
Correct.
And I'm just asking that question, because.
Inside service.
Yes.
Inside service.
And I, I mean, I, one thing, I don't see any lifts outside where they can, no, I do see lifts on certain garages that are outside. I do not see one there, so I'm assuming it's all inside, or I can also enforce that rule.
I don't believe there's any lift outside.
No, no.
Uh, the petitioner shall conduct the business at all times in a manner so as not to be offensive to the residential abatis. The granting of this special permit, uh, authorized shall ensure the benefit of the applicant shall cease in the event the business is sold or sublet to another party. The permit will be subject to periodic review by the board, by the board's zoning enforcement officer. If the restrictions noted as part of the granting of this permit adhere to or operated in any way offensive or detrimental to the neighborhood, this board would ask the, um, enforcement officer to begin the procedure to rescind the permit. The petitioner shall abide by all requirements of the Department of Public Works and the Town of Lunenburg and the State of Mass with respect to ingress and egress to the property. The petitioner must comply with the town bylaw regarding signage. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but you make sure that the signage is.
The signage will have to be compliant, yes.
Any lighting shall not be offensive to the abiding properties, and that's something that we've already discussed. And the Board of Appeals is, uh, is true and correct, I'm, that's not adding that yet, 'cause we haven't even had a vote yet.
Mr. Chair, I, noting, noting one of the things I was, when you said that the business would cease, would cease if, if the property was sold or sublet.
Right.
Is, is that service station that's there now, the original folks who owned the property when you purchased it?
No, they didn't, they, I, I bought it from a group out of Vermont, right?
Right, yeah, it was, they owned the gas station.
They were renting, and then they just stayed when I bought it. They've never owned the property.
Okay, but isn't that, when, if the property changed hands, should the business have, have had to come before us again?
Yes.
Because I don't remember seeing that garage.
Wouldn't that use be grandfathered in?
For us, nobody ever came before.
No, nobody ever has, or, you, when?
When, when he bought the property, did the business that was already there get grandfathered in?
To be honest, I, I don't know that, because they did, they didn't, they never did come to us.
Right, they never came to us.
It should have been come to us.
But if, well, that's their business, but if it's a service station, and it's been a service station for, you said since, for fifty years, it would be, the change of, uh,
Change of use didn't change.
Under the law, they couldn't change, that use is grandfathered in as long as it's been in compliance under the law.
Okay, alright, I, I'm just, it was something that, when he, when he mentioned, I just wanted to, you know, because.
I understand.
Look, the concern is not as much, to me, the concern is not as much yourself. I look at this as a positive in the fact that you're looking to clean this lot up. It is an eyesore for this town, and whoever's been the tenant there has made it worse and worse over time, since the original owners stopped doing their gas station, and it became just service only. We know that those owners tried to sell for a while, and, you know, that's what we're seeing here, is that, I'm wondering if they're even, if they had, what I was wondering is if they had, really have the authority to actually still have a service area there once, once the, once the place was sold?
Yeah.
That if they had to come back to us.
Yeah, no, they, like I say, that, that garage, that one service bay has been there for.
Oh, I know it's been there forever.
These guys are zoning.
The gas station is ninety-two. The gas station, if it's ended.
Ninety-two, correct, yes.
Then the businesses of the gas station may no longer exist, so the idea of a gas station versus a service station only is in question.
Why is it in question?
Should they, do they have a legal permit if it was a gas station and it's no longer a gas station?
Yeah.
But they, but they've been continuous use since nineteen, at least nineteen ninety-two, so they wouldn't need a permit. They, under the law, it's a conforming, it's a, even if it was a non-conforming use now, as long as it's been in effect for that time, they have the absolute right to operate a repair station.
Yeah, they, yeah, it's grandfathered, no question. The repair part of that business has been part of that business since it's been there.
Okay, I, I guess I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if it was the same owners since ninety-two.
I, I'm sure, I don't know when it was bought out or came here, but that used to belong to Tucker.
Right.
All the Speedway gas station.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's just.
Any other questions?
I just have one really quick, construction-wise, it looks like you're just kinda carving out the front southeast corner to be your, I'm assuming that's your office?
They're gonna share the office that's currently there.
Okay.
That office is currently there already.
Okay, on the inside too, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, that's all I, um, yeah, I mean, I, I hear all the questions, but I, I would say it looks like you're, you're trying to do it right, so, yeah.
I got just a, a question. Would it be, I mean, he's doing the right thing, but it would be a not-to-exceed limit on the lot? So if there's a, a problem on the lot, emergency vehicles can get in and they're not blocked in? So would a, a number of cars not to exceed on the lot be, okay, with the?
The number of cars, you talk of a ingress and egress from the site.
Yeah, I'm talking, so he's gonna have twelve cars and sixteen, uh, customer this, customer that, so the number twenty-five, right? So would, could this?
My number's still twenty-one. They suggested twenty-five.
So, all I'm saying is, would it be feasible to put a, a number of not-to-exceed as a stipulation on the special permit?
Um, like I say, this, yes, this number is gonna be there. These, these.
Right.
This is going in, and we're gonna put it in as the plan approved.
Right.
And so, you know, these parking spaces that you see on here, these, uh, six here, and these six here, and these, uh, one, two, four, customer parking, one handicap, four in the back, that's what's gonna be there.
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna ask the building inspector to enforce.
Okay.
And if down the road, if he cleans that lot up, if that guy in the back decides that it no longer makes sense for him to do repairs there, and he leaves, and he takes over and, and says, hey, you know, I need more cars, you know, you look at my lot, it has done a great job, it's cleaned up, you know, we've had no issues, he can come back for us. But when he gets this, this is what he has.
Okay, alright, Mr. Chairman, that's, that was my question. So we all, I mean.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, do you have any more questions at all? Are you satisfied with what you gave us?
Yeah, the, the application, um, the applicant is satisfied with what has been turned into the Board of Appeals. We ask, um, respectfully that the board approve the special permit.
Okay, and do you have anything to say on the conditions that I read?
No, all those conditions are fair and reasonable, and, uh, Mr. Smith will be fully complying with those.
Okay. And with that, then, if there's no more questions, I ask for a motion. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify, though. You gotta make sure when you make your motion, whether you're doing this or you're adding two parking spaces, whatever you're doing.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the plans as-is for the sale of twelve cars with the ability to have six customer, I'm sorry, five customer parking spaces and four places for repair, and employee parking.
Okay, I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
And with that, I do have a little bit of reading to do, mm, on the special permit. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any condition, and non-compliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. Special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use has commenced. And with that, we wish you good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Welcome to the night.
You too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you all get like a fifteen percent discount if you buy a car from me.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I wanna do one more thing while we're on here. Um, just if anybody is watching, we do need to see if anybody is interested in joining the zoning board of appeals as an associate member, and if you would like to do that, you can go to the town hall, and you can get a volunteer form to fill out and turn in, and, uh, we will look at it.
Or you can just go online, the town website also.
What's that?
The town website also has the form.
Oh, okay, good. The town website also has it. With that, thank you.
Can I see that again?
So I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we are adjourned.